Okay, we're gonna have to say the pledge there's our flag.
Sure.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Josh, you want to say your name?
Sure.
Okay, this is the meeting of the Lincoln County Commission Regular Session on September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, at six p.m. And we are in room one oh three instead of one oh eight, and I would like to apologize for this. I know it's not ideal, but they're still having court. Okay, members present are Darryl Baker, Phoebe Harless, Charles Vance, and Josh Stowers. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of our last regular session that was held on September fifth, two thousand nineteen, at six p.m. Don't have a motion to approve the minutes.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Aye. If I have a motion carries. Okay, under public comment, we don't have anybody signed in to speak, but before we get started, I would like to have Alan Holder come up and Francis come up.
Go boss.
All right.
First, I would like to congratulate you on completing. Francis has been in class for a year, about a year.
Since March.
Hundred and fifty-two hours he had to complete at the, let me get this right here. It was, he graduated yesterday from the National Emergency Management Institute's Emergency Management Academy. This is the first time they had this class in November, January. And I think there was only thirty people, thirty-eight people who completed it, so.
Yeah, there's the little guys. So I, no, Sean's gonna get all kinds of stuff.
And Greg Fuller is here from West Virginia Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management. He's our liaison. He's responsible for all the counties in this part of the state and making sure that we answer our questions properly and do what the state tells us. Maybe just mention a little bit about how intense this program he went through was. I don't, I want people to truly appreciate what he did.
Well, thank you, Alan. Thank you, members of the commission. Francis, as you know, is very, very dedicated, professional to in the emergency management community, is respected around the state, certainly is a leader in our region, and this is the first time, as you said, that this program's been offered in the state of West Virginia. It's a hundred and fifty-four hours spread out over several months with a lot of projects and work it's got to do in between and a lot of study involved in it. Francis not only completed the program, but he also completed a train-to-trainer portion for the, for the program and taught modules in the program as it progressed. Of course, Francis has a remarkable education and background in science, a graduate degree in safety management, and was able to also become an instructor for the program here in the state of West Virginia. We're just very, very proud of him. We're very proud the way he represents Lincoln County. We're very proud of the way that he represents the region and the state, and I'm sure you folks are too, and I just wanted to be here to, to help honor him. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
And I apologize for lying to you and telling you why you were coming to the commission meeting. This is why you're coming.
We told him, we, he was in trouble. That he was in trouble over something and had to come up here. We thought he was gonna be on the hot seat.
No, we, we have another, we have another item there on the agenda.
Okay, um, do you want to go ahead and?
I'd like to go ahead and do that if we can.
Well, Lisa, woman, Bob, I should just for a quick second and let them go ahead so they can be, then, what Alan's talking about is the wrecker service in the county.
Not the personnel matter for the number.
Oh, the personnel matter.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Oh, that was all we're under name.
New business, yeah.
Okay, um, we'll talk about the wrecker service next then.
Okay, okay, you can do that.
There was an item on, under new business, fellas, to approve the OES Office of Emergency Management Personnel Issue submitted by Alan Holder.
And my, my, my request is this, and it has to do with Francis. Very few, very few times do you find somebody with the type of dedication he's shown. He sometimes bugs the living daylights out of me, but it takes that to keep me in line sometimes, and he is extremely dedicated with what he does. I can think of numerous occasions where I have had to say, Francis, you've been here sixteen or eighteen hours in the middle of this disaster. If you go down because of your diabetes, or you go down because of a heart attack, you're not doing this any good. You gotta go home. You've got to go. And Francis is just like that. He never, he never wants to leave in the middle of something. He's always there. He shows up before he's called, and it doesn't matter whether it's Christmas or in the middle of the night or any other time of the year. He's been very, very dedicated and.
Or elected.
Well, he did help.
He was carrying generators. He was starting generators, yeah, it was, it was.
We had the power go off in the middle of our last election, and Francis, with the help of some of his, some of his coworkers, took generators to all the elections and make sure all the polls stayed open on generators. So I'd like to ask the commission to approve my request to change his status from planner to Deputy Emergency Services Director effective with our next pay period. So Luke, a second.
Okay, we have, it's on the agenda under new business, but we'll go ahead and put a motion in. We've got a motion on the floor in a second. So all in favor say aye.
With Francis's help, we've been able to move forward with this mitigation project. We're looking at over four million dollars coming into the county. You go to Yaqui, you look at what we started over there. Francis babysat the construction crew, made sure they did a great job, made sure everything looked good, and it was, it been his baby and his project that's been going on now for close to three years. And I thank you for your dedication, Francis, and I look forward to getting more work out of you now.
Hey, Alan, if I may, I wanted to point out that Michael Mayhorn, who's Francis's counterpart over in Boone County, came here today, and that's the kind of relationship Francis has built with the neighboring counties, and if there's something he don't have, he can call on them.
Francis, go over here.
And I'm gonna help too. Thank you for being here.
Congratulations. You know I'm hyper.
You know you're not.
I know you're not.
We have a closed Facebook group, all of the counties around us do, and I guess it was eleven-thirty last night, my wife rolled over and said, who in the heck is dinging your phone again at eleven-thirty at night? I looked up and I said, it's Francis and Michael and the guy from Mason County, they're all discussing things back and forth, and it was eleven-thirty last night, so, and I mean, they, we've got a very, very good group. I think our group that encompasses about seven counties here is probably as close as any group in the state, and we thank Greg for being our fearless leader.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Alan, while you're up, before you, we'll go ahead and skip down to the wrecker service and let you address that. Since I've been on the commission, nothing has ever came up about the wrecker service, so this is all kind of new to me and Josh, and it's been a long time, I think, since we all have. So can you, we need some guidance and advice from you. I know you've been working on it, we talked about it, but I just want you to everybody else up to speed on what's going on.
If you haven't seen a copy of the state statute as it relates to the nine-one-one centers, it's under section twenty-four, six, one is where the nine-one-one code starts under the public service. Anybody else wants a copy of it?
Yeah.
You've probably seen it, Scotty, but here, I know the press will wanna say. It basically says that we have to rotate wreckers or have a policy or something that is both, I'll read it. It says every three years, we have to have a policy in conclusion with public service units, public agencies, and all available tow services registered as common carriers pursuant to the provision of chapter twenty-four of the code. We have to establish a policy that provides for the most prompt, fair, equitable, and effective response to requests or dispatches for emergency towing service. And it also says under section B that we have to have a wrecker log. I've got a copy of the wrecker log. We keep a log anytime we call a wrecker. It's not nearly what it was at one time. At one time, if you did anything even slightly out of line with police, the police towed your car. There were a lot of vehicles towed for impounding purposes. That's just not done anymore, but we keep a log. The last time we addressed this was, we had about five or six wrecker services in the county, and everybody was competing for business. There's just not a lot of business in the county on the wrecker side. There's less than fifteen calls a month countywide, and that's that we deal with. So Mr. Saul's brought it to our attention, Mr. Harper's brought it to our attention. I think there is at least maybe one other service. Everybody is on mine and Josh's and Phoebe's end of the county that's, that's addressed it. So we need to schedule a meeting as soon as we can to look and making sure that we do have an effective policy in place that does adhere to this section of the law. We have to involve the fire, the police, the EMS, and everybody that has the need for a wrecker service in the county and make sure that everybody is in compliance or in agreement with that policy, and we also must involve wrecker services with that. So if you all wanna do it prior to another commission meeting or have a special meeting for just that purpose, then I'm basically here to ask you to go ahead and let's schedule a meeting, get on our calendars, and move forward with this.
Okay. All right, I think that that's what we need to.
May I make a comment? The, the wrecker services have to be qualified under the PSC. All of them have to be inspected, controlled. We're totally controlled by the PSC, so anytime you include additional wreckers, make sure they bring you this PSC, because a towing and recovery service is two different type, type operations. We're controlled under the PSC.
And I can tell you that over the course of the last couple of years, we have a wrecker service that might forget to turn their insurance paperwork in or forget to do a little tiny technicality, well, the Public Service Commission would send us an immediate letter and an immediate fax that this person cannot be used until these issues are resolved.
You're a void.
And we took, said action, and then within a matter of twenty-four, forty-eight hours, we get another letter from the Public Service Commission that they can be added back to the list. So what he's saying is accurate. We have to have that guidance from the Public Service Commission, but this whole law was, came out of a wrecker war in one of the other counties that, that was brought about, and they wanted to make sure that everybody at least had some say-so in it, so we hadn't had to deal with it, but like I said, we had five or six wrecker services the last time we dealt with it, and since that time, everybody's went out of business, changed hands, passed on, passed their business along, something, with the exception of just a very few in the county, so.
Yeah, that, the, the PSC, they automatically register us with the Department of Military Affairs, because it's much more than just county-level wrecker services were listed in the military affairs in case of emergency disasters and such stuff as that. So it, it, it's much more than just what a wreck or towing a car is, you know? We have to have first aid equipment, almost like an ambulance on these trucks. So it's, it's a pretty intense thing that, an investment we go through.
Fully, fully understand, and we just, this will give us the opportunity to let everybody have their say-so.
Alan, do you feel, our next meeting's the third of October. Do you think that's too soon? We need to wait for the meeting after that?
I think it's gonna be too difficult for me to pull things together by the third, and, and I'd already discussed this with Phoebe, I'm scheduled to be out town on the third, so.
And that's the only meeting we have that.
In October, yeah, the next one will be November seventh.
Well, we can meet prior to that meeting.
I was put on Canola County, Canola County rotation for the quarter G area of Canola County in about forty-five minutes. That's how quick it, quick it went on. So my qualifications, my paperwork, they told me to come give this to the nine-one-one director, and I'm, I'm automatic. I'm automatic, there's, you know, I'm licensed to tow wreck anything in a county. If I roll up on a wreck right now, no matter who's on nine-one-one call out, I can take that wreck legally, and there's nothing nine-one-one or anybody can do about it.
No, but you do have to make very clear that if the police officer calls nine-one-one and asks for a wrecker, and they call for another service, and you show up in the meantime, you are doing what's called scanner jumping, and you will lose your privilege, not only here, but in any other county.
Well, no, they said if, if, if I don't, don't operate that way. If I was to go up on a wreck and the people there I know or something say, yeah, we want him to tow us, that's perfectly legal.
That's, that's, that's fine, but most things in the scanner and showing up, yeah, if you look, if you look at any policy, both Canola County's policy and Campbell County's policy, and probably Boone County's, you've gotta be very careful, because we've had that problem in the county where one wrecker service would be next on rotation, somebody else would show up and release the car to the wrong wrecker service, and that, we have to be very careful that that.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I'm not go wrecker chasing, but I'm, I'm.
Well, and, and, and I, I question, I, I wish you well with your business, but when you look at our wrecker log, there's not enough, your nine-one-one calls are not gonna make you or break you.
Oh, I know that.
You're, you're gonna get probably three or four calls at the max a month. There's just not that many calls in the county.
You'd be surprised how many I've already called. I've had twenty in the last, since August third, since I started.
But most of them don't come through us, though.
Well, they were wrecks that requested not to go through you. State police was on scene. I do have impound areas, so impound areas are open to the county sheriff, state police and everything, so.
And sometimes the state police use us to call a wrecker, sometimes they go through their own dispatcher. That's not for us to.
Well, they, they're already using, they're already, already using me, and, you know, so, you know, I'm gonna fight to get on this, you know, one way or the other, if I, you know, because I've, I've made investment, even if it's one call, I'm, you know, the, the, the fire departments complain about, blame the time that they gotta set out and wait on a wrecker and such stuff as that, these volunteer fire departments.
Absolutely. We don't want anybody to have to wait any longer than necessary, and I don't think it's my intention, nor the commission's intention to fight with you at all. It's our intention to do this correctly, because we have every public safety agency in the county, and the other wrecker services that have been here have been established that we have to do this in the proper manner, because we could walk out of here tonight and make you a happy man and make everybody else unhappy. We've got to do this by the letter of the law. If we don't do it by the letter of the law, then someone's gonna come back and ask us why.
By the letter of the law, if tax-paying record businesses in your county, that's where it falls.
So that's, that's the intent is to have the meeting and work on the policy and do what's necessary.
There's only a couple of us, so, well, I'll see y'all next month. I appreciate it. I love your time. I guess that's all you need me for.
Well, we'll notify you whenever they come up with a meeting, Nick. How's that?
I'll be back.
I got your ringtone, so I know your number now. All right.
Okay, so what is your suggestion on the meeting?
I think that it could turn into something long enough that you don't want to try to do it before a commission meeting, or it could.
Well, I can, you know, having been here when we did it before, and you were too, you know, one of the things that I think we need to address is just what the law's saying. I mean, you know, look and see what Boone County does or what Canola County does, and if you get into these swaths, we're not, it's not helping us any with that. I mean, we, we just need to do this to make sure we are compliant with code, and, you know, once we, and that's all we have to address. I mean, I, and I know it can take longer, but it's, you know, it's just like, what you get into is a matter of opinion, you know, of how things should be done. And what we need to do is address what the law says and make sure that we're compliant with the law and leave it at that. But it's totally up to what the commission wants to do, but I have been through hours and hours, and Alan has too, of these type, of the meetings we had before, when really what we needed to do was just, just go with what the law says and leave, leave the rest of it out, so.
But the law says we have to have this meeting.
So you have to have a policy. And it has to be done in a, you have to do it based upon what provides for the most prompt, prompt is quick, whoever's closest, fair, equitable, and effective response. So by no stretch of the imagination do we expect a state police officer or a sheriff's deputy to call a wrecker from one side of the county to the other side of the county. We have always had kind of territories or areas divided up and rotations within areas if there were multiple competitors, and that's what we will have to establish, and I think, maybe I'm right, and I'll ask Michael to clarify, but I looked at Boone County's policy. I found it online, maybe it was in one of your commission meetings that it got published, but I think it said that you all asked for the owner's, what's the owner's request first?
Yep. So our policy is owner's request, Ginnie, we're in County, as long as we can get the wrecker service there in a, in a fair, prompt manner. Secondarily to that, it's the territories we've set up. For our county's split up in, by a mountain range, basically, there's, there are different competitors for different areas, so we've established response areas for those. That's secondary. So if a similar authority on scene says, call a wrecker, that's who we call for that area. They're not available, we go to the next closest. Third tier is the agency on scene request. Fourth tier is nine-one-one center's discretion. We like to keep us out of it as much as possible, so it reduces the complexity on the nine-one-one center and the commission.
But you can see based upon that list, there's not a ton of repercussions in this county.
Okay, do you want to not have the, the first meeting of November with your concerns about the time?
Well, I, well, mine was the first meeting in October.
Okay, that's okay. Because October, we can't, October, we can't get everybody notified and what, so it would be November, so Thursday of November, but the seventh, but.
Well, if you do it at five o'clock, and you got an hour to say your thing, and the meeting's over, and you move forward.
You want to just do that now, and that way we?
Yeah, I, I think that's better, because the more time that's available, the more interjection of personal feelings and what it means to them and things like that, when we really, and, and I understand that's important, but we really gotta deal with what the law says, and, and make sure that we have something on paper. And that has to be, is that every three years you supposed to do that? Is that correct? Yeah, so.
And we were never really compelled or really pushed to do it, because there was nobody asking to be on the list.
Right, but, but I'm fine to do it before the meeting.
So we would essentially be just approving a policy at this meeting.
Yeah, and, and as we've done historically before, we look at other counties around us and say, you know, this is what Boone County does, or this is what.
It's not broken, why don't, why recreate?
Right, and then, and then, and that's, that also, you know, we know, we know it's a work already, and we don't wanna put something in there that's not gonna work, so.
Ours is simple, two pages, you get some counties, it could be thirty pages.
Wait, I pulled this, wait, four or five counties, or some of them are this, and some of them those pages, yeah, go with it.
Well, I think one of the things that, that will come up, and it was, it was alluded to tonight, was wrecker services in Lincoln County. I think we've made it very clear based upon the USGS Census map that Breedlove's is in Lincoln County, and, and we can argue that all we want, but is Breedlove's in Lincoln County according to the map?
According to the map, it is.
Okay.
I knew I was gonna get something out of that, Alan, it's from Lincoln County.
Well, according to the map, it is, and even, even in the course of the last couple of years, we've gotten all the streets that he had in that area and moved them into our system so we could kind of deal with it, you know? That'll be a controversial subject that we're probably going for years after we're gone.
Hey, for our days, yes.
Yeah, but according to the map, it's ours, and we've got it, and that's gonna be an issue that, that, that's gonna be addressed, so I think we have to, we have to keep that in mind.
Okay, so let's say November seventh at five o'clock before the committee.
Now, if you run into, some of your roots can't make that, or that not does appear to you a good date for, let us know pretty quick, and that way we can try to work out another day.
I'll shoot this up to the Firemen's Association, and, and at the same time, ask them if they have any written comments or any emails that they want us to consider, because they may not be able to, but in the meantime, we'll take Boone County's policy, and, and Campbell has a pretty simple policy also, and, and I'll email it out to you all to kind of take a look at and make sure, but my, my personal opinion is, is to keep us out of it, and, and I like if, I like the policy the dispatcher's saying, does the driver of the vehicle have a preference? And let them make that call, and then if Mr. Saul or Mr. Breedlove or someone else wants to go out and spend money on advertisement, then, then that can be beneficial to them, and leave it, leave it up to the owner of the vehicle to decide, to decide, and then only as a last resort, get us involved with it.
We need to make sure legal is this too, or is it remaining with Jackie, whoever, just to make sure that.
Before we have the meeting, you, I get your.
Yeah, if you, if you send us a copy of what we want here, you want to go with, then let's make sure Jackie gets it ahead of time, make sure he doesn't have any problems.
Do you, do you all plan to look at that policy on the night of the seventh and adopt it, or do you wanna take the input from the people and then? I don't see any reason why Mr. Saul or, or Mr. Harper, as long as they have the proper paperwork from the Public Service Commission, that we can't add their name in our computer system, not necessarily call them or add them to the rotation, but put the numbers there for the dispatcher, so if somebody does ask for them specifically, we can call them, and, and I don't have a problem with doing that now, but if you truly take the input from the public on the night of the seventh at five p.m., are we really in a position to approve the policy that night, or do we need to?
We can do it at the, at the next following commission meeting after.
I mean, I would like, I mean, I would like to have a policy before us to review, and this is me here, I mean, I'd like to have a policy before us to review and to take comments from all of these entities at that time of what's being presented before us, and if, and if we feel like that we could approve it at that meeting, I wouldn't have any trouble with it, but if we needed to potentially amend it or continue to change it to some degree to adopt later, I mean, I, I would like to have a policy, I mean, a, a pretty well-bent policy before us to discuss with everybody, rather than trying to put it together.
We'll have a policy before then, and then we can, I'll add that to it. And the Firemen's Association meets twice between now and your November meeting, so we could ask them to review that policy, and they can either endorse it, or, you know, if they endorse it, we can get the law enforcement to also do the same thing, and that goes a long ways, that's already have a policy, because we have approved.
I see you'll contact all, everybody?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for coming, fellas.
Yeah, I love coming out here, especially when the volunteer fire departments pay me, if you folks got business, then I would love to hang out.
Don't need anything else from us?
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thanks. He called you at midnight?
No, it's Mrs. Schmidt.
It's called vacation.
It is. I know, I was awake. I'm worse.
All right, Lisa, I was for Region Two, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
We kind of got our order.
That's fine, absolutely. I'm just here as a, as a follow-up with regard to the public hearing that was held prior to, with regard to potentially applying for a broadband planning grant in the Community Development Block Grant Funds. Just basically to see if there is interest after the public hearing from the County Commission for Region Two to do that.
I would, I would believe that we have Region Two, that, 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 that grant.
Okay, I have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You can.
And as part of that, there's a letter to the Development Office requesting a waiver. Should you, asking permission to make this application, because you currently have an open grant with lower mud, but even though, but it's wrapping up, they will, they ask that you ask for permission so they can review to make sure you don't have too many open grants to Community Development Block Grant Funds. All right, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have to decide.
I don't need the minutes from the public hearing.
She says we have to have the, the second hearing on thirtieth. Do we have a tentative time for that?
I think from fifteen and another meeting after twelve. A special meeting at twelve-thirty, and now basically be to approve the application and sign the documents necessary, because. A special meeting at 12:30 and now basically be to approve the application and sign the documents necessary because the.
So, we're going.
That's mine is that day.
So, we're going to say 12:15.
For the public hearing.
Yeah. And then 12:30 for our meeting afterwards to approve it and sign that grant.
Again, I appreciate that. I know that that's a tight timeframe at a weird time.
Do we all have to sign that?
I just need a quorum. You too.
So, Josh has, thinks he might have scheduling issues, so he doesn't need, you could.
More than likely to have to call him.
But he won't be here to sign that?
I, I need, I just need basically two signatures. We'll, we'll do the job.
Can you be here?
It's on the 30th, what day is it?
Sunday.
Yeah. All right, great. Then we'll get it to FedEx. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you, Lisa. Rick, Nick Dial with Camp Lakeview update. Rick, we miss seeing you. You've been, been here for a while, it seems like.
That's true. I haven't come with any requests or any problems. Not that this is a problem. So, I got, I've got two things I wanted to. One is, they're both updates. One's an update on the environmental school field trips that we've been doing. And these happen before the school year ends where we bring out classes from different schools. Whoever says they want to come, it's first come, first served. And we run them through activities in the morning, watershed ecology, nature awareness group games, nutrition, shooting sports, just depend on who can come to present. And then the afternoon, we do swimming, canoeing and kayaking, supervision. So, this year we had seven of them. We had 306 people. That includes the adults that come, parents come with their kids. It cost us $1,170. So, it's not especially cheap, you know, almost $200 per day. But it's a good activity and everything we do meets at least some of the CSO's content standard objective for the grades that are out there. Some of them meet more than others just because some presenters are more tuned in. I think this is probably the fifth year that Camp Lakeview has sponsored the whole thing. Before that, I was with WBU Extension as the county 4H agent. So, I was going to put that hat on, so I just changed hats. That's a program we do. So, it's a pretty good program, I think. Unfortunately, the board of ed doesn't really take any role in it. And after I cover up this next thing, maybe I could sort of get you to think about possibilities with that. Okay, so the other thing we've got going on at the camp is the free Wednesday program. And that's every Wednesday during the summer. This year we did not partner with Tri-River. We have partnered off and on in the past. The last partnering we did did not work out very well. It just, you know, there were days that the buses didn't run, so kids were waiting.
Was that last summer?
That was last summer. Last summer was a big disaster. At one point, Tri-River was doing it for free and then they said, "Well, we can't do it for free anymore." Anyhow, we didn't, we didn't do Tri-River and this was the first summer that we didn't have them helping. I don't think it impacted attendance very much, but it did impact getting low on help kids after. So, that's the bad thing when Tri-Rivers are picking up kids because they're going around, you know, Stones Trailer Court, front of Wiggly Wiggly, and so a lot of kids, the only way they can get out there is that, so. But if you look on this chart, you'll see that we had 403 people attending. Our cost was just over 16 under. We had nine different days we did it. So, our average cost per person, you could look at it in lots of different ways, but the cost per person was just under $4, which was, actually ended up being more of a less expensive summers.
Was it last summer that you paid Tri-Rivers or one summer you had to pay them?
Yes, we paid Tri-Rivers. Well, no, I don't think we did pay them last summer because they were so embarrassed about the mix-up with not showing up to pick kids up. But some summers we did, I, I can't remember which, which we did and which we didn't. The other good thing about it that makes it possible is we've got different groups who provide the food, Capitaine, Marshall, sandwiches for the kids. We've got church groups that are doing that. So, that, that's a good thing because it keeps our costs down, but it's also a good thing because we're involving people in the community to help with this kind of stuff. So, it's a pretty good program. The commission, of course, doesn't have any money, pretty, oh, I have some money. But they don't have money like they used to. It's probably been, I guess it's four years, do you think, Heidi, since the commission was able to support stuff that we have done at Camp Lakeview? Fortunately, we were pretty good stewards of the money that you gave us and we still have some money left. We do get some income from rent, from rent at the camp. We don't get a whole lot this year. The rent so far, and I don't think we're going to get much more, is $820. So, it's not a whole lot to run a program that cheap or to John's, we're going to be happy. Do you have any questions about either of those? I'd be happy with that. So, okay, this is the ask. It's not only an ask. We can read a little deeply. We've got this thing called the Camp Lakeview Development Authority, which has been around since the 80s, you know, a long time. And it's sort of been very active and less active and sort of active. And we're at a not very active stage right now. I'm on it, Lisa Rainey is on it, David Roberts is on it, Pat Davis is on it and KK was on it as a commission rep. So, we need some more, I think it would really help us have some more people. I think it would help us have some more energetic younger people to help with this.
Are you wanting to add people too?
I don't have any suggestions, but we are, we've always had, and I don't know that it's mandated, but we've always had somebody from the commission on it. So, it would probably be nice to get some, a commissioner who would be willing to be on it. And I think what we do is sort of schedule and meeting around the commissioners' schedule and always other people.
How often do you need to pick one?
How long do I?
How often?
Depends what emergencies come up. Not too often, I mean, sometimes quarterly, sometimes be less often than that. Just depends if we've got something rolling and we don't have any kind of, we don't have any crises at the camp. If you don't want to think about it.
He's said young people, so that leaves me.
No, that's apart from it.
I would, I wouldn't care.
That'd be great. Okay. I will get with you, Josh, and figure out when, when you might be able to, you know, help with that. That'd be great. Thank you.
I think we can rotate all one.
Oh, you could all come.
Yeah.
So, the other issue, I talk about young people, isn't it? I know I've said this for several years, I'm probably as young as I used to be. And I'm, I am saying that next summer is going to be my last summer to do my current kind of goal, which is sort of running the whole ball of wax. So, we're going to have to find somebody to run it. I don't know whether we're going to find somebody who is a certified lifeguard, who's done it for 50 years and who will do it for free. I don't think that we're going to find somebody. But I think there probably are people who might do pieces of it. But we need to, we need to do that. And we also, you know, there are always constant kind of things, you know, the road needs its work or we need to put a new roof on, those kind of things we do.
Did any of these kids that worked over there this summer as lifeguards, there's Alex.
Alex is the head lifeguard. He graduates from Marshall this spring. So, I'm afraid I'm going to lose him completely unless it decides to do graduate school at Marshall.
You know, our hope the past couple summers is that somebody would come and work.
Well, at one point, we actually hired somebody and trained it. But then he bowed out and said, "I don't really want to do this." The other option, the other thing that I think could happen would be to get the board of ed to buy into this a little more. And maybe to assign some board administrator, just one more thing to do, especially with the end of the school year environment. So, I could see how there would be somebody who would be in charge of that. And that the board might say, in their wisdom, I think they should say, "This is a great place that we've got and we could do all sorts of science-related stuff out there. It could be a learning lab."
Have you gone to a board meeting?
I haven't gone to a board meeting to take that.
Do you want to go on?
No. Let me go and see what happens.
Maybe we could put a few bugs in their ear.
That'd be good, yeah. But I think to, to think about it being a, a Lincoln County Board of Educational Learning.
The kids do love it in this room when we go there.
Yes. I'll, I'll give you a holler, John. If you have some time as you're available. Okay, thank you very much, folks.
All right, Rick.
I'll come back again. Thank you.
Appreciate what you do, Rick.
Well, I like doing it, so. That makes it fun.
I love it.
Well, I'm trying.
You've been trying.
I know, but now I said I'm only going to do it one more year, so that's, that's a little harder. Okay, thanks.
Sean, we couldn't, interesting, you've got a little red-headed girl that might like to go over.
Awesome.
Don't you think that'd be good news?
I think it'd be great, Ben.
Few years later, you'll see.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the Board of Equalization here. We have one person that's contacted us about having a hearing in October. State tax department says we have to have it in October. So, we've been having a terrible time getting it set up. Can you all walk and sing? What day do you think it October will work for us to have this?
The 22nd, was that on a Monday?
That's a Tuesday. 21st is a Monday.
No, the 22nd, I can, I can make it on a Friday.
The 22nd.
That's perfect.
We'll do 10 o'clock?
Yeah, that's fine.
Or 9? What do you want, 10?
10's fine.
22nd's a Tuesday.
Yeah. That's what she just said.
Yes, it's a Tuesday, yeah.
I need you here.
The next day has to work.
So, it's 4:00, set it, or 10:30 you said?
10, 10 AM.
10, on.
Tuesday, October 22nd.
Okay. Let's go to Holda Connie, let her call and see if she can get that.
Stayed on being.
Oh, they don't have to be here.
Just does. I'll email the Emerald Garden. Save up today.
Sounds good.
Josh, what are you thinking?
All right, so that is it that we have on there. We have Truman Chafin here with us who represents us in a, some pending litigation. Something kind of time-sensitive came up and you need to speak with us in executive session about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session? So, let the record reflect that we have a motion in a second. It's all in favor to go into executive session, say aye. All right, let the record reflect that we're entering executive session, it's 4:00 a.m.